I would like to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Ortonville Village Council, Monday, November 28th.
It's okay, leave it there.
And it is seven o'clock. If you're not here for the village council meeting, I hope you enjoy your time here anyway. I'd like to ask former Fire Chief Bob MacArthur if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. A roll call, please.
Hayden.
Here.
George.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Can I vote?
Here.
Brandazzo.
Eppson with notice. He asked me to let you know that his first grandson was born this morning, seven pounds, eight ounces.
Cool. And Quizzenberry.
Here. Okay, everybody who's here is accounted for. Approval of agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Nay. One nay and four yays. Approval of council minutes. First, we have the regular minute meetings from October the 24th. Everybody get a chance to read over the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 24th, 2022.
Support.
Okay, movement supported, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are accepted and become official. Item B, workshop minutes from November 14th, 2022, held in this very room a couple weeks back.
Make a motion to approve the workshop minutes of November 14th, 2022. Support.
Movement supported. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed, please say so. Good to go. Acceptance items, this is item number six on our agenda. And there are two of them. In this case, the financial report for October is in your packet. That's in need of acceptance, and so is revenue and expenditure report from October. Any questions about it, or are we just... Everybody's kind of cool with that then, right? Looked at the money being spent. Seems they'll be going to the right place. Approval of disbursements. Payables ending November 15th, and it came to $66,933.60 of disbursements. Everybody okay spending that?
Make a motion to approve the expenditures of $66,933.60 for disbursements this month? October, I'm sorry.
Yeah, movement supported. Any roll call, vote please.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Can I vote?
Yes.
Quizzenberry?
Yes. All right. Money well spent. Next is number eight, and it's public comments. Council members might notice this is a different agenda than we had in the past. I did move a couple things around. Changed a couple things on our agenda. Expect to see a few more changes coming about, but these are going to be two that are on here for now. And in the public comments section, used to just indicate for agenda items, and then at the very end of the evening, for anybody who wanted to address the council for any other reason. I kind of thought that was disingenuous to a citizen to sit through a two and a half hour meeting just to speak to us and tell us about a barking dog. So we've combined the two, and what I'm going to do first of all is ask that if there's anybody here who wants to speak to this council, and it does not involve the marijuana ordinance, I'd like you to go first if you would like to. Hey.
Hello, my name is Laura Frommwiller. I'm the Director of the Brandon Township Library, and thank you for hearing me. I have some things to share with you tonight. Ryan came to me a couple weeks ago and talked about a book club that you guys have an opportunity to be a part of. So we went ahead and put together a brochure for you all, the books that we have available at the library that are on that list, and a list of books that we can get for you if you're interested. So I'll pass that around. I also have a copy of our library calendar, which includes all of our board meetings and closures, for your information, and also a copy of our annual report, so if you wouldn't mind. And we are looking forward to being in the parade on Saturday. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in and looking at us. It's 7:06, and you got to do your thing without having to wait.
Thank you, Laura. I will send you guys digital copies as well, because I have them. Thank you very much. That's going to be very helpful for village council and planning commission as we're learning more and being engaged in all kinds of land use discussions.
All righty then. Anybody else here that's not related to the marijuana ordinance decision? Okay, now we're going to move right on to that one. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to the council about the ordinance involving marijuana, hold on just a minute, please, because I got an announcement that's going to go with this. I think most of us were here at the workshop that was a couple weeks ago. So if... Just keep in mind, we've already heard most of what was going to be said then. So I'm going to let everybody talk. We no longer have a three-minute time limit for discussions, but we do have a time limit. It just isn't three minutes. It's as long as something is focused, and is not repetitive, and keeps on going longer than it needs to. So if you're going to make a comment, by all means do so, feel free, but be brief, and if I interrupt you and say that's about enough time, that means we've got, we're going to get out of you, or you've at least had a chance to say what you'd like. And I will just select people based on who raises their hand. In the very, very back, if you want to come up here, please, and state your name before.
Good evening, Noah Harfush. I'm here on behalf of Berserker Group LLC, who's a marijuana facility applicant in the village. If I can just jump in. Thank you, first of all, for holding the last meeting. I think that was crucial. I've been to a number of municipality meetings, and I could say that none of them took the time to walk around, look at site plans together. So I thought that was really important, to see the different projects and to do it in front of the public. So thank you for that. Also, thank you for taking the time to go through and review each and every application. It takes a lot of time to put them together, so when you go through them and review them carefully, we greatly appreciate that as well. I'm not going to rehash what's in the applications, because I know you all spent the time going through them. I think that there is an interesting thing to say here, though, which is that in Ortonville, I felt personally that the zoning really controlled where the ultimate locations would be. And the reason I felt that way is because of the buffer requirements that were put in place. We've done some of our due diligence. We feel that our location at 456 South Ortonville meets all the zoning requirements. We feel that not only does it meet all the zoning requirements, but it's a perfect location in terms of traffic flow, and we provided traffic studies for your benefit to review that. Lastly, I think that we would be a great community partner. Aside from the money that will be, you know, provided as part of our community benefits program, we want to be there, like I addressed last time. You will have our cell phone numbers. We're going to be in direct communication with anybody that has questions, and that's just not only on the village level, but also on the community level as well. We're going to have a drop box for comments, anybody that has questions, anybody that has complaints. We're going to address them. We're going to have a community leader that is dedicated to doing that. So with that being said, we really appreciate your time.
That was one of the key phrases we mentioned earlier. With that being said... Thanks again, and I'm going to go to the next gentleman. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Bob Kirk with the Law from Kirk &amp; Huth are here on behalf of Jars Holding. We appreciate the opportunity and thank you.
I didn't say this earlier, I apologize for interrupting you, but he made an excellent point. Everybody put a lot of work into those boxes, and they've been in the village, and every single council member has spent personal, private time in their own, going through these top to bottom. So just rest assured that the council's aware of what all those packets contain. So with that, continue, please.
So I'd like to adjust our site. I think our site is the best one. I think it could handle traffic as far as ingress and egress, great site circulation. We're going to be rehabbing an obsolete building. The things we can do now are one thing. The second thing is, I think, our community benefits. We have a member of the staff at Jars that could address those. Want to say a few things about community benefits, more than what's in the application.
Okay, thank you. Who else was going to go next? I see you have a hand. And you are part of this thing?
Yes.
Okay. If there's going to be kind of a tag team or something, make sure that you...
Appreciate it.
Are not going to repeat what the other person had already brought.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Nicole Milton. I am the Community Events and Social Equity Director at Jars. I work throughout all of the locations. I know that we have a very thorough piece in our application. I did bring a copy, just because I know you had gone through applications, just to refresh anybody's memory on the things that we promised, if I can pass those out to you. I wanted to say that we are going to have a community liaison that is going to be at our store, who is going to work within the community. We are focusing on hiring right out, right into Ortonville, as well on the outside Oakland County. If we have to go out further, we will have 15 to 20 employees. We're starting at $15 an hour. I can speak that we already have benefits that are in place, 401Ks included, insurance is included, which is very important when you put people back into the working environment if, in fact, they're chronically unemployed. That is one of the things that we want to focus on as well. Also, to let you know that we have ongoing educational sessions that we already have in place. We are working with pantries. Now, we have a program that we are, all of our stores, our employees are actually hands-on in every community, giving back into the community, because this is a large corporation that the people want to be involved in. So I just wanted to state that as well. And the tax-based revenue that we want to generate, like I said, is coming back into Ortonville.
All right, great.
And the $85,000 that we want to give to Heritage Park.
Also great.
That's a very good, big plus thing. Thank you so much.
Who else wanted to speak to the council?
Mr. President, if I may. I am missing names and organizations for, they come up, they say it fast, and then keep moving.
Okay.
So if you don't mind making sure that I catch your name and organization before you continue speaking, that'd be great. Thank you.
Nicole, N-I-C-C-O-L-E, Milton, with Jars Holding.
And the gentleman before you was?
Robert Kirk.
Robert Kirk. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Get the first one as well?
The first one I need, please.
Noah.
Oh, the first one.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, ma'am, you may go, and we'll do this correctly now. Just start off with your name and spell it for the record and the organization you're with, and then we can jump into your words.
My name is Wendy Hammer, H-A-M-M-E-R.
Thank you.
I'm representing the Fleming family with the Country Countertops. I spoke briefly last time about the family situation, moving here in the 70s, and our legacy that my dad and family tried to live on. I just wanted to kind of add to that, that currently my brother is running the business with his son. They are the only two employees. He's, you know, struggling to pay his own son and the benefits of what this could do to the community and the building. To bring it back to life would be, you know, beneficial to all of us. So I just hope you consider that.
Glad to hear that. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the village council? Yes, sir, you may approach the podium.
Thank you very much. Joey Kejbl, appearing on behalf of Pioneer License. Last name is K-E-J-B-O-U. I'm here with Ms. Hammer. You heard her speak momentarily about the site. It's the first property when you come into Ortonville. It's currently in a dilapidated condition. They really don't have any resources to rebuild it. The business is struggling, and at this time, there's only two employees working there, her brother and her nephew. What we're looking to do is revamp that entire property, make it presentable, make it a showcase entrance for the village. The first thing you see when you get on South Ortonville and enter the village is going to be this new property, bright lights, all-in compliance, new parking lot, refaced building, all the bells and whistles that a proper retail facility should have, and something that a village would be proud to have as their first property when you enter the village. Signage will all be up to speed. Everything will be in order. In addition, from a hiring perspective, I previously mentioned this, we are looking to hire from within the village. We anticipate having 20 to 25 jobs, all paying well above a living wage, opportunity for benefits, opportunity for employees to promote from within, and that's really the concept and at the soul of what we're trying to do at this facility. And on a final note, our community benefits plan. We are looking to pledge this money. This is not just merely an idea, an expression of possibilities. We are offering a $200,000 contribution on the front end. This is not, no strings attached. In addition, we're looking to have an annual contribution that would also go towards whatever different projects that the village has in mind. They'd be able to spend it freely, or identify a different need that they would like us to devote it to, and we'd happily cut that check. Thank you for the opportunity.
Oh, there's another hand. Yes, sir. You only went about halfway up, though, so I didn't know what I meant. Okay.
Waiting on one other, actually. Justin Denaskis with Denaskis Consulting Development, here on behalf of Cloud Cannabis. And actually, one of the partners should be here shortly, Ron Bostic as well. And so, as I mentioned, I'm here on behalf of...
Just a minute, were you able to get his name in?
Representing Cloud?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
I know, Justin.
Okay.
Thank you. So again, I appreciate the time this evening, because my client, I guess, was not here at the last work session. He said he wasn't informed, nor did he tell us to come and present or so forth. So we apologize. So I wanted to at least highlight a couple things that were in the application, and about the site, and who the operator is as you're making deliberations. Because if we look at the site, it was actually strategically chosen for this exact use, and fits very well on the site. This site is the only one that has three parcels that are all controlled by the same operator, so we can have a lot of buffer, as well as we look at how many parking spaces and architectural firm that we use. We've designed over 25 sites now that are in operation. And particularly, you don't have to take my word for it, the guys that have planned out for the site, but in Utica, the site and the store sees, on average, about 750 people a day. Never sees less than 500. A lot of times, it sees over 1,000 people a day. And we're actually trying to get a letter for this evening from the police chief, and there hasn't been one traffic incident, there hasn't been one traffic report or anything from that site in Utica. And if you look at the partnership we have with Utica, we've already given back well over six figures at that, to directly to that community. So I want to make sure some of these facts are brought out when you look at the application, because particularly, again, the site, strategically chosen, no issues, questions whatsoever about the buffer, if it works or not.
Okay.
It's not...
Thanks.
Well, can I finish the other part?
You were going over items that you already went over. That's the only reason...
Okay, that's fine. So the other thing's experienced operator at the store, we have 10, Cloud Cannabis has 10 stores currently operating, four underworks. Next one up in Holly, if you go and speak with Holly, and we're relocating their train depot there. Our community benefits, we had a hard $25,000 to a splash pad, which was outlayed and talked to, and number of your plans and brought into, as well as we set a percentage of sales. So each store, on average, over $100,000, just on the percentage of sales of give back. We like to cement that and say, you know, $100,000, and we know that there's an infrastructure issue currently, and so it doesn't go just to, it goes to the area of needs. We like to pledge that $100,000 directly to the infrastructure that's needed in the village, because this site unequivocally meets all the spots, has the operations that know what they're doing to make it happen. And in particular, if we, again, look at the site, there's no questions on it. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I see one hand in the very back, sir, yes. Now, I noticed, did you just arrive, or did you hear what I spoke about prior to the comments?
Roger Ingles, 29th South Street. I just want to let you know, I believe the light is a very critical spot for us to place anything new facility, and the...
I'm sorry, Roger, I didn't, you said what?
The light is a huge responsibility for a good safety cause, and we don't have to have additional lights or, and/or any traffic work needs to be done. So I think it will be a great benefit to the village and the entire community, not have to disrupt on 15, putting turn lanes in and stuff. Also, I'd like to add that we talk about a lot of money here. Sewer and water, more sewer than water, is critical. If we can get something where we earmark some of this money towards sewer, I'd love it. I'd be happy to sit down and work with anybody on the sewer. I've got 30 years of building sewers. I can tell you about different plants I've built everywhere, and I think we have a great shot of doing things correctly. I know if we go up to Genesee County, we are going to go upside down to the point where we can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger, and I'm sure a lot of us are in agreement. Okay, last chance on hands. All right, thank you very much. That moves us past the portion of the meeting on public comments. It can take us right into item nine, which is approval of the consent agenda. That includes minutes of the planning commission, minutes of Ortonville Historical Society, the Downtown Development Authority, the attorney invoice, special permit use for Christmas parade, and, pardon me, a special permit use for Christmas in the village. Those items are all in the consent agenda, and I'm sure we've all had a chance to look through.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those who approve the consent agenda indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Any council members opposed to the consent agenda? Nope. It passes unanimously. We can move on to number 10, which is items from trustees. You may or may not notice, this was two items on previous agendas in the past, where the trustees would give a committee report, and then they would also talk about anything that they chose to, that was of their liking, be it comments, questions, or just a time to speak about anything you choose to. So those two items have been combined. We'll go around the table, I suppose. We'll start on my far, my far left, and you can, if you're on a committee, just tell us what committee it is, or, it's more for my purpose, because I don't necessarily know them all. And then whatever comments you want to make, or talk to the board about.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. Pat George, I'm committing to Jer, person, a liaison person for the Historical Society. And the thing regarding the Historical Society is this Saturday, we have an annual Christmas parade, and we will be open for business. Treats, hot chocolate, we'll have music, we've got a couple piano players coming in and playing. And we have the reading room, which I have somebody doing some readings also, and that's all I'll say about that particular piece.
Thanks, Pat. Okay?
Kay Green, I am, I serve on the Personnel Committee and the Fire Board until a few minutes. When the Fire Chief gets up here, we're going to make some changes.
Okay.
But as many of you may or may not know, Jenna is leaving, our clerk, on the 8th, I think it is. And so we're going to be working on updating the clerical job description, which we're pretty much done with that. And there's a couple of things in the personnel policies that we have to critique, but we'll be in the process of hiring a new clerk very shortly. That's all. Thank you.
Great. And if anyone knows someone qualified to be clerk for the village of Ortonville, certainly get ahold of one of us or the village manager during business hours. Larry?
Larry Hayden, I'm on the IT Committee and the Personnel Committee. We are the personnel. IT Committee, we have not met in the past month, but we are working on both for replacement of the treasurer's current computer. We're checking right now whether it would make sense to get a desktop versus a laptop, so I think we're going to get some comparative quotes with that. Once we have more of these items in line, we'll have another IT Committee meeting. Regarding items from trustees, one item I would like to ask to have on a future agenda presentation in January is discussion around budget, because since the auditor's report, I do have some concerns about the differences between the initial budget that was passed prior to the close out of the year and the information that's come to fund balances since then. So I would like to have requested a workshop or at least a discussion at a council meeting in the future.
Thanks, Larry, and it's well worthy of a workshop, because I get probably the same questions, if not more, about Jesbeck. So it might be something that, a workshop that can just strictly address spending and revenues would probably fill up a whole workshop. At least, I think it would. Melanie?
Yeah, and to add to that, I've been trying to get on the agenda priority list for the village, so I think that would go hand in hand with that workshop. There were several things that I requested to be on the agenda tonight that are not, and when we approve the agenda, usually we get an opportunity to discuss it. So I thought my nay, we could discuss why, and I was going to make a motion to add wayfinding to it. So I guess, hopefully, that'll be on the next agenda. I'm prepared to do a motion for wayfinding. Heritage Garden is the next presentation for the 500, but where are we with the lights?
For Heritage?
Yeah.
Thought we'd talk about it after presentation. I've been talking with, I can't remember his organization, but Jaren worked with the city of Flynn on several outdoor illumination projects. He's, we've been vowing back and forth on quotes and what we need and stuff like that. He's going to come to town, hopefully, in the next week. We've been trying to find a day.
Okay.
Working with RS is always fun.
Okay, cool. All right, good. So we'll keep you posted with that. Shop Small was really good. I came down and went shopping, and they seemed pretty busy when I was down there, so I hoped the rest of the day went well. And I am terribly saddened and disappointed to see Jenna go. She was one of the best clerks I have worked with here in the village, and it is a big loss for us, so hopefully we will be able to fill that position soon.
Thanks very much, Melanie, and also all the council members, thank you, because it's helpful to me, because some of us, you know, we met before, but I like hearing from everybody, so I appreciate that. That moves us on to presentations of an MML Foundation Grant. I assume that's Michigan Minnesota League?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was a grant we got, and it's in here somewhere?
No, actually, I copied it and gave it to everybody. The press release was not included in the packet, but we do not need to read through it. I believe the citizen got it, or this, I don't know, Shelby, you guys are all set with it, the press release? Okay. So basically, all we have to do is have to just present it and take a picture for the paper.
Oh, that's all great.
Okay. We talked about this last time.
I think you wore the tie today.
Yeah, right? Okay, so we're just going to stand right here, if that's okay with you. This is from the Michigan Minnesota League Foundation. It is a $500 grant. It was a personal grant, not a, this was not applied by village, it was applied by me.
You get to be in the picture.
You and I, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Who's taking the picture?
Ah, Shelby was going to take.
Do you want to? Yeah, Val.
Thank you, guys. And for those who did not know, we talked about it last time, but this is to go towards Heritage Garden. And the lights that will be on the building, we're looking at washer lights, so that at nighttime, when people are walking their dogs, or when we're having Christmas in the village or whatever event, we will now have some lighting. So it's the beginning of the Heritage Garden Park.
Well, thanks so much for that.
Thanks for your work on it, Melanie, too.
Thank you.
Public hearing. This is for, this is item 12, and this is our designated public hearing time for the Community Development Block Grant. We receive it every year, or at least I think we have for the last 20 or so years since it's been founded. So this community development money, I think it's funneled through the county, if I remember right. So this community development money, I think it's funneled through the county, if I remember right. And it comes to the local municipalities, but it has a lot of restrictions as to what the money can be used for. And I know in the past, I don't know what it's been going for in the past, but I know we wanted to look into either spreading it out more or even a different final destination for these funds. Do we need a motion to go into public? To have the public hearing, do we need a motion?
Yes, we do.
We make a motion to go into public hearing at 7:30?
Support? Those in favor?
Aye.
Well, we can now say we're officially in a public hearing. Not to be confused with the public hearing, we just came out.
Right.
Oh, my goodness.
And again, this is for money we're going to receive as a grant, funneled through Oakland County. It's a community development grant, and it's for purposes in dealing with blight or poverty or things like that.
So your packet has a couple pages regarding this one. And Jenna made a very helpful guide to some of the different programs that we could consider. So that's this item in your packet. It lists all the eligible projects and uses. CDBG gets very heavy in HUD and federal lingo and jargon very quickly. So you can get lost in the sauce rather fast. But like you said, it's for community development block grants through the Housing and Urban Development Department of the federal government.
It does seem to me, mine was much thicker than that, because it had a lot of different choices in it. And it seemed like there were, the number of things you can't use it for outnumber 1,001, the things you can. Or there were so many restrictions to it that just made it not even worth accepting the money for some of these projects.
But it can be pretty intimidating. But luckily, we've got some people who've become pretty expert in working with it. Oakland County also is our pass-through for it. So they're quite helpful, actually, in administering all the CDBG funding and deadlines. And it's a program where you commit to the service now, and you don't get reimbursed for a couple of years. So it falls on like four different fiscal years for a municipality, and it's always exciting. But it's worth it. So your packet has this information about different eligible uses, as well as a letter from Haven that we received regarding CDBG funds. Any questions on either of those? It was recommended to me that when we do make a motion, that it be pretty broad, and that it include the corresponding project category. So rather than just say, I want to use this for sidewalks, we would use the corresponding code. Or just an example to say it's for neighborhood cleanups, which would be 05V. If we can use a corresponding category, that is always helpful. Feds like to see that kind of thing.
Being day one on the job, I'm just going to defer to other council members and see what anybody else has to say, because they have no opinion.
Public is, anyone in the public can speak on their particular project.
Anybody have a particular public project that meets the criteria laid out by the Community Development Block Grant folks? Mr. MacArthur, boy, I missed the cue cards on a couple of these. Go ahead, sir.
I'm just glad to hear that you didn't restrict me to three minutes now. I like that.
Well, everybody but you.
Enjoy that. Bob MacArthur. I am chairman of the Brandon Groveland Youth Assistance. And we have used CDBG funds for a lot of years, and done it with an awful lot of clerks. And I want to let you know, your clerk has been one of the better ones to get to work through this process and get it done. Just to give you some ideas of what we've used the CDBG funds are. We did a 300 middle school and high school student program. It's called Destroy Illusions. We've had 20 students that got tutoring through the summer and the fall, which would have been through math and science. We did 50 kids out of Brandon Rec, which would involve soccer, baseball, and cheerleading. And again, all of these kids, their families had to meet those HUD requirements in order for us to fund that project or fund that person. We did swimming programs during COVID, or just after COVID, and one during the holiday. We've done kids for junior Blackhawks, four kids. We did a driver's training for one student, and that was a special request from the caseworker who felt that this student needed something positive in life to move on. And that's an expensive, for a family that's at those lower incomes, I think it was like $475 to put their child through driver's training. We've worked with a group out at the Mobile Home Park. It's called FUJI's, F-U-J-I. And don't ask me what that acronym, Shelby might be able to tell you.
Future Generations International.
Shelby's also on our board. It's also her birthday, in case anybody wanted to know. The, we did 12 kids to a youth convention, which was a faith-based program. We've done kids with getting certified for babysitting. We sent a couple to boot camp, which is a correctional-type boot camp, you know. And it's volunteer. It wasn't that they were sent there by the police. Our Challenge Day, we're doing 200 kids, all high school students. And they do 100 kids at a time. And Challenge Day is a very special program, because those kids are challenging one another on what's happening in their life. And they find out that other kids are having the same type of abuse, problems in their family. And it's always, gives me goosebumps, because they realize that other kids are having the same problems they have, and they had no idea that some of their friends were suffering with the same thing. So we're doing those. And CDBG, again, is covering these items. We did about $20,000 worth of CDBG through COVID, where we didn't get to use an awful lot of it, so our fund built up. And we're in the process right now, in the next month, ending those coffers of those previous CDBG. But we have several programs that happen that were not funded through CDBG. We do Love &amp; Logic for 25 families. We do OSIT, Autism and Child Abuse Awareness. We did a youth recognition program that we do 189 kids, which we end up having about 300 adults attend that program as kids get recognized for whatever they did through that school year of some type of accomplishment. We funded, helped fund the Senior Lock-In, petting zoo for September Fest. We bought gifts for Fuji out at the Mobile Home Park for Christmas. Movie nights, we help assist fund that for 150 attendees. We did Steps and Stories, which is associated with the library, Laura and her staff. Most of you know Fran. And that's a large program. I think this year she did 13 kids, I believe. And we helped fund that. And then we solicited a organization, Eastern Stars, who purchased school shoes and socks for all those kids that attended. So we've been busy. Again, when it gets down to the point of, we do get funds allocated to us, where there's two specific types that, there's child services and youth services. The child is 13 to 4, and the youth is 13 to 17. And it needs to be designated that way, because that's the contract we end up with the county. Thank you very much, and looking forward to keep on working with the village. Thank you.
Okay, I think if there's nothing else, we can close the. Oh, back here, I'm sorry.
Again, Roger Ingles, 29 South Street. Everybody knows me by the beer tent. My property hosts the beer tent, and several farmers' markets, and the different items, which is nice to everything else. What Bob's doing is very honorable, and I don't want to work on this year's funds at all. But what I'd like to do is actually look at building some type of community area where we can have the farmer's market, have some type of enclosure. Also, I would build a garage as part of that, so I could help clean up some of my blight. Because I do have a little blight out there. Anyhow, I think we would build something that would be very fantastic for the community. Whether it's enough to enclose entire beer tent, I wouldn't say that large. But we go through and do some really cool murals, stuff on it, and make something really cool. I'm not sure exactly how to go about doing that. I'll sit down with Ryan, see if there's something, what we have to do to apply. Like I say, if it's not this year, maybe next year, maybe a couple of years. I won't be around long, maybe longer than I want. Or you want. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, Roger. Thank you. Okay, we're still in the public hearing portion. Are there public comments or questions about block grant money and its usage? The public hearing is, do we have to motion to close it?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
At 7:40?
At 7:40. And those opposed? Okay, takes us to item 13, unfinished business.
Wait a minute, do we not discuss, do we not discuss this amongst ourselves at all, or no?
We sure can. We'll stay, we're going to remain on number 12, public hearing. So let's carry it away. But the hearing portion's closed.
The hearing is, yes, the hearing is closed. So I had some questions that, there were, they're projects that I had requested information on. One which I really can't talk about in public, that I talked to you earlier about, Ken. So how do we want to go about doing that? I know December 23rd, I believe, is the cutoff for?
That's when it's due to Oakland County.
To Oakland County. So we would have one more meeting before then?
We would, but we won't have a clerk at that time, most likely.
You're going to be filling in, you're going to be busy, I guess, huh? Okay, so I was told, so I want to, acquisition of real property is eligible. Parks and Rec eligible, code enforcement is eligible. So I was just wondering, does anyone else have, other than those, something that they were looking at?
Well, from my perspective, I would prefer to see the CDBG money go more directly towards residents' needs. So I like supporting programs like BGYA, or OSEF, or Haven, because that kind of goes directly to people who need it. So that's kind of my preference, is to steer the money towards those things. But of course, it's up to the consensus of council.
Kay, did you?
Those are certainly, you know, good causes. I mean, I don't think there's any bad cause where we could send our money. And we have given to the programs before. But last year, I believe it was, we had talked about Parks and Rec, about our trails. And I guess I would like to see some of the money go to trails, so we can get that project moving. It seems to have come to a stalemate. It's not that much money. It's not like it's going to, you know, create lots of opportunities. But it certainly would get us moving more on it. And I'll speak for Tony, because he's not here tonight. But being as I was on the Parks and Rec Committee, I know the need is there.
Brian, how many times can we, can we split this up? Can we have it four splits?
We can have several.
Okay, thank you. Pat, did you have?
No, I'm just hoping what's your people want.
What do you want?
I'm on the spark grant.
Okay, well, I'll start with a motion.
I do think also, in causes like that, you mentioned it.
What? Say that again, I'm sorry.
OSEF, for example, those kind of funds, 2D. What's the one that you have? Better than, what's the shelter?
Haven?
Haven's a good one.
Haven's in Pontiac, and we gave to them last year as well.
Do you want to make it more local? That's fine.
Personally, yes. I mean, but that's my own personal opinion. I mean, we gave to them last year, so people still may have that preference.
You want to make a motion, Melanie?
Yeah, I would love to. I'd like to make a motion that 2,000 goes to Code Enforcement, number 15, Parks and Rec, number 03F.
2,000 there also.
Yes, that's what I have, 03F on this. Does she have a different one? That's what I have on my sheet I sent to her. Is that correct? Okay. 2,000 go to BGYA Child Services, and 2,000 go to BGYA Youth Services.
I'll support that.
Okay, there's a motion and a support, and a roll call vote, please.
Do we have discussion first?
Oh, sure.
If we put 2,000 of those, if I understand this correctly, we have currently 8,001 dollars. So it might make more sense to modify the motion to put 2,000 here, 2,000 there, 2,000 there, or including any few dollars amounts. I would propose to keep the 2K-2K split for BGYA, 2,000 for the code enforcement, and all the remainder, if there's extra, go toward the park improvement.
2,000, you got to say that again. So you want?
I would recommend 2,000 for BGYA Child Services, 2,000 for BGYA Youth Services, 2,000 for code enforcement, and the remainder, which should be 2,001 dollars.
2,001 to the Parks. Okay. I amend my motion to reflect that.
I support the amendment.
Is there any more discussion on the motion that's currently pending?
When Courtney comes up for air, can we have her read it back to us? Take your time.
I have a motion by NiVelt, supported by Green, to give 2,000 to code enforcement, number 15, 2,000 to BGYA Child Services, 2,000 to BGYA Youth Services, and the remainder to Parks and Rec, number 03F. I apologize, I don't have a packet tonight.
Then I need it to you. I'm sorry.
It's totally fine. I just don't have the numbers in front of me.
But we will slow down anytime you would like us to.
I'm.
The only numbers we have are the 03F and 15. We don't have numbers.
Are those two there? I had them cracked.
Hold on, we do not have numbers for BGYA? Bob mentioned to do child and youth, or do we have numbers for that?
We have them. Would you like them in the motion?
Yeah, where is the child and youth?
The bottom of page seven in this one in your packet, 05D, is youth services.
Gotcha.
Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but 05L, as in lion, is childcare services.
So that's the?
Is that correct?
Okay.
Childcare services? You were napping back there.
He was, wasn't he?
Childcare services, is that correct?
Yes, but just to caution you, when you go to check with the county, the things that you're doing is very questionable whether they will allow it. And I'm not sure they will allow you to have a contract for two of those, for those youth services. But I mean, that's something that can be dealt with, but just.
What do you mean, to split it? So would it be better to have it in one or the other for your?
That can be done. We have a ton of time, once we've already designated it. So, but if we need to adjust contracts with the county, that can be done.
Okay.
But I appreciate it.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
The numbers?
Yes, so the childcare, or the, yeah, child would be 0511?
L.
05L.
Or 05L, thank you. And then that youth is 05D?
Yeah, it does say, public service. Yeah, it does say, public service contracts of the same type are not permitted, but if they're two different codes, wouldn't those be two different types?
Probably. Uh, CDBG, there's always surprises, but, uh, that's why we work closely with Oakland County to, and they're helpful in figuring those things out.
Okay, and we have one more meeting if we need to make adjustments to this, correct?
Uh, the timeline, that's just the initial application, and there's several stages and steps along the way. So having as much detail as we do now will be helpful in the long run, but...
Want me to take a roll call?
Whenever we're caught up.
Waiting on you, Mr. President.
Okay, if there's no other comments on this, uh, there is a motion, and I'm sure everyone understands it, so I, we can, uh, hold on.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Uh, George?
Yes.
Whizzenberry?
No.
Okay, uh, it passes four to one, and the next item on our agenda is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, so we can move right up to new business. Uh, number one, or I should say, letter A designated, is the Brandon Fire Department. They have three items here, approval over their budget amendments, and a request to approve an E-tool purchase, and an adoption of the amended two thousand twenty-three joint operating agreement. That's the operating agreement that the village enters into with the fire department and the township for the services they provide. Uh, Chief Pappas, I'm sure you're here to address those?
I am.
Well, then, take her away.
Alright, um, it should only be about three or four hours, so...
No problem.
Alright, uh, the first one up is budget amendments. Um, the first budget, uh, with the volatility of the fuel markets, um, we've had to, unfortunately, uh, we need to bump up our numbers for both diesel and gasoline fuel, uh, for our purchases. Um, and we need to bump those up from, for gasoline from twenty thousand to twenty-six thousand, diesel fuel from fifteen to twenty-six, and that'll get us through the rest of the year. Anything that is left over, we'll go in to carry forward, uh, for the following year in that same account, and, uh, we will take this out of, um, our carry forward that we currently have. Is there any questions?
I make a motion to approve the increase of line item two zero six dash seven five one dash six zero one point zero 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 gasoline from twenty thousand to twenty-six thousand. And increase in line item two zero six dash seven five one dash six zero two dot zero 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 diesel from fifteen thousand to twenty-six thousand.
Okay, moved and supported. Roll call vote, please.
Um, Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Whizzenberry?
Yes.
E-tool purchase. Okay, so E-tools are electric rescue tools. Uh, when we refer to rescue tools, we're referring to like, you probably heard the Hearst Tools or the Jaws of Life. What we currently have are hydraulic tools that are over thirty years old. Uh, they are no longer effective, or not nearly as effective, let's put it that way, um, at ripping apart the, uh, the metals that we are using today, and the way that they are making these metals, specifically in our A-post and our B-post. A-post is the pillars that come down to hold the windshield, B-post is the next pillar that comes down behind the, uh, the, the doors, if you will. Um, with the way they roll those metals now, the tools are just having a, a harder time to do that. Um, rescue tools have, E-tools have been out for over three years. We've been looking at, actually, closer to five, six years. We've been looking at it for over three years. Um, it is something that we need to purchase. Um, so I feel confident now with the technology, um, that the batteries are finally getting to where you're not in the middle of cutting a car open and the tool dies. Uh, the battery life, uh, using the lithium batteries are much better. Uh, we looked at several companies, Genesis Tools is what we've always come back to. We've had, uh, three manufacturers out two different times, tore up multiple cars. Each time, crews came back and said, "We really liked the Genesis," they liked it for the ergonomics, the ease of use, uh, that it was a non-proprietary battery, meaning I can go to a hardware store and pick up a Milwaukee lithium battery and plug it back in, and away we go. Um, the proprietary batteries are upwards of, uh, seven hundred to a thousand dollars each, so very expensive. What we're looking to do is replace two of our three sets. One to go on the new engine two, one to go on our current engine one, and when our new engine one comes in, we will order a set for that, but that won't be in for two more years, um, is what it's looking like at this point. So what you have in front of you is to purchase two complete sets. Um, that includes two cutters, two spreaders, two rams, the ram extensions, the angled heads. Also, a tool, uh, it's what they call a combination tool, that we can care on, carry on our command vehicle, so that we can, um, also use as, uh, ancillary to that, to pop in doors, but we can also use it to enter into, um, steel doors, commercial doors, that type of thing. Um, total, I'm looking for a motion not to exceed eighty-two thousand dollars. If you have any questions, um, one of the things that I will say is, uh, with that suggested motion, um, we look to see if there was any real value to the current, uh, hydraulic tools that we have. They're about twelve to fifteen hundred dollars is all they're worth, unfortunately. Um, but there are agencies in the UP that have zero equipment. And, uh, they would definitely, uh, take advantage of the equipment and use it, so we're looking to donate that equipment.
Make a motion to, um, per, approve the purchase of the E-tools in the amount of eighty-one thousand, eighty-two thousand dollars, I'm sorry, and that we would donate the old equipment to someone that could use it.
Support. Okay, moved and supported. An expenditure for the fire department for some tools, um, roll call, please.
Um, can we have a discussion, please? Um, do you need her to read the motion, so you have your line item and everything in it?
It probably should, just for clarity.
That's not gonna happen.
It's not?
I don't have the packet in front of me.
I will give you this.
I can give you mine.
I can, I will put it in, I just don't have it right this minute.
That one right there.
Yep.
Can you hand that to...
There you go. So the motion reads to approve the purchase of the above listed Genesis E-tools not to exceed eighty-two thousand from my rescue resources, LLC, from the two thousand twenty-three ENH budget, equipment line item two zero five three four four nine seven seven dot zero zero zero, and donate the used AMCIS equipment to a department in northern Michigan.
Thank you.
Someone already support that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, good to go then, uh, for, a vote.
Nyveld?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Whizzenberry?
Yes.
Uh, and the third item from the fire department is the twenty-twenty-three operating, joint operating agreement that we have with the fire department and the township. Uh, we all received that packet in the, in your handouts, and it just explains who, hey, who takes over which responsibilities when it comes to the running of the fire department. There really are not, no changes from what we've been doing in the past?
There, there's some minor changes, yes.
Okay, would you highlight them, or do you know them offhand?
Yep, I can, I'd be more than happy to.
Please.
So the, uh, the big change is what you're gonna see is that the fire authority has been made up of, currently is made up of four members, two from the village and two from the township. It's the village manager, a village, uh, council member, uh, the township supervisor, and a township, uh, board member. Um, that will change, so that it's only two. It'll be the village manager and the township supervisor. Um, so if there is a expenditure, um, or a, uh, policy change, or revisions, or any of that, it'll go before those two, then they will either say yea or nay. Um, and then it would go on, if it's a yea, it goes on to the township, the township then, uh, would be brought up at their public meeting. Um, it would be voted on, and then the information then would be passed on to the village council as a, um, uh, form of letter, uh, to let you know that, hey, this is just the stuff that's going on. Um, what it does also do is that we don't have to have a joint meeting anymore for our budgeting purpose. So at our September meeting, when we had our joint meeting, there was discussion by both boards to streamline that process and to get rid of, uh, the joint meeting, if there was a way to do that, and this allows us to do that. Um, obviously, I am still available, uh, to this council for any and all purposes. If you have, uh, a, a meeting that you need me to be at, I will be here. Um, I will also, uh, keep an eye on the, uh, the agenda items to see if there's anything that, uh, does have concern for the fire department. So it's not like, uh, you're gonna wash your hands of me, nor am I of you. Uh, we'll see each other on a regular basis.
As much as I have enjoyed being on the fireboard, um, it makes perfect sense, because the township holds the money, we don't hold the money. And they do the approvals, and we're just, uh, we would just be, you'd let us know what you did.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any other discussion about the operating agreement with the fire department?
Just one question, I am okay with, with taking village out of the loop for the approval of expenditures and such, because it is township money primarily. It's not really village money per se. But I see an E, it says township clerk shall finish the township, and they struck out in the village, monthly reports. I would still like to see those monthly reports, unless they're already included in the township.
They are.
They would be with the township minutes, because when you receive the township minutes...
So if we receive the township minutes...
Yeah, you'll receive...
Okay, then that's...
Yep. It really is trying to reduce duplication of authority, if you will, I guess, is the easiest way to explain.
Make a motion to adopt the revised fire authority joint operating agreement, as presented with an adoption date of January first, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
Okay, uh, maybe that doesn't involve money, but we'll still have a roll call vote on that later.
George?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyveld?
Yes.
Whizzenberry?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for coming in.
Melanie, did you support me all?
Uh, the next portion of the meeting is the conditional approval of the marijuana establishment. That's what we've been discussing here for a little bit. Uh, at the attorney's request, he said we could pass out these straws, and the one that's the shortest is gonna be the one. It was not exactly... We can do straws if we want. And now, I bought a deck of cards we can cut and go with the highest, uh, first one with an A. Yeah, no, I think we, we should do something different. I, I, uh, try to get my hands on a rookie board, um, none of my older run that, so that's, that's out of the question. What we did agree on is, uh, a tally sheet that each council member can fill out, and I'm gonna pass them out to you now. Tally sheets have each one of the six proposals listed on them. And what I'd like to do is ask each council member to rate the six proposals on a one to six scale, with one being the most favorable and number six being least favorable. Once you've completed it, folded in half, we're gonna hand it over to Courtney. At that time, I'm gonna call for a five-minute recess, and Courtney will tally up, uh, each council member's, uh, scores and provide us with, uh, a final. And you mentioned that their initials are to go on the top of each of these sheets. Top of the page, you can put your, the initials of who's filling out that particular tally sheet.
You do need to put your initials on your tally, as it's part of the public record.
Okay, can we have a, a same number down, or do they, do they have to be different?
No, it's each number has to be different. It's a one through a six.
What order you, you know...
You know, whichever, if, if, and if you want another blank ballot, I can just pass yellow.
Uh, while you guys are tallying, I'll mention that your packet contains the score sheet, um, that are compiled, uh, based on the scoring system as prescribed in the ordinance. Um, you'll see that all six applications received a final score of sixty points. Uh, therefore, per the ordinance, um, it is up to the village council, um, to decide based on, um, goals and objectives of the village, so...
There is.
Here we are.
Larry needs another minute on this. Make sure I get them right. Courtney, when we take a break, all like the number ones, add them up, divide by five, or does he have to make the correction? Okay, well, then basically, just abstain, if, if you don't mind doing that. Because that would throw off.
Doesn't the council have to approve his request to abstain from a vote?
Yeah, but I didn't think...
Abstain for that reason, Ken.
Timeout, let's, we're, we're, we're in open session.
We're not voting yet.
We're not voting, we're just taking our tally and...
They have to give a reason why.
Mr. George, you wish to abstain?
I don't like any of them.
They have to give legitimate reason why.
It doesn't have to be that, we can just proceed with four.
And I've looked at the data, and I don't like any of them.
We can't handle it. So...
Unless we have a...
Conflict.
Right, 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 timeout. I'm just trying to understand, first of all, his position before I can answer any questions, so...
So he needs to give a reason why.
Yeah, Mr. George, I understand, you don't, uh, you said you don't like any of them.
Correct.
Uh, but the...
You wanna know why?
The scoring system requires that you score them, you know, least to favorite.
I don't have, I don't have any variance on any of them.
Okay.
Neither all sixes.
So, um, really, the only proper basis for abstaining is you have a conflict of interest. And, um, that isn't what you articulated, and so that's not a proper basis for abstention.
It is your duty as a council, elected county or council official, to vote on these matters.
Uh, I've been here, I've been here now for over four years, that's the first time I've ever heard anything like that. It's never been the case.
Okay, now, we're gonna, we're gonna proceed with four ballots.
Yep.
And it's on the record that Mr., uh, that Pat George is...
Abstaining.
Did not wanna participate in the tally. Uh, we can't make someone vote. However, um, I wanna go on the record, I, I, I don't routinely attend your, uh, meetings to know if this issue has come up before. But you can abstain if there is a conflict of interest, and in the absence of that, your obligation is to vote.
Right.
I'll leave it at that.
That's what the MMLs is.
Yes.
And, and not only MML, but, um, Michigan's, Michigan statute for laws that's signed here, that's what the basis of it.
There you go. We're gonna proceed with four, and you'd sign the record. We're going to proceed with four and you sign the record. So we received all four. It is 8:10. We will take a five-minute recess and the recording secretary will tally those, average them, and we will have a number that's going to decide which entities or which proposals will be licensed by the village board. We'll, we'll come on back here at about eight. Let's call it 8:20. We'll reconvene. Thank you. And in other words, we don't get enough issue these tomorrow morning. But we don't have to meet on them because they've been voted on and it's a motion. We're accepting the results of the tally.
December 8th being important because the ordinance calls for 30, within 30 days after the closing of the application deadline, which was November 9th.
I think that was the date somebody gave me, maybe it was Jenna, but yeah, a hundred before that. You want to do it sooner, it's up to you.
Do you want the names? Do you want the addresses? Do you want just that, what the tally said?
You can say that we agree with and support the tally as presented. And you can even name proposal A and proposal C.
I make a motion to accept the results of the village tally and instruct the village manager to follow up with issuing licenses to applicants A and applicants C.
Permits.
Or permits to applicants A and applicants C no later than December 8th.
Support.
Moved and supported a roll call vote, please.
If I may.
Courtney.
Wait.
Did you get all that? Do you want to read it back? You're good.
She's good.
Don't give me too much props. Um, Hayden and Nyval. Um, roll call, I was not prepared for, but you give me one second. Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyval?
Yes.
George?
No.
Quisenberry?
Yes. And that motion passes four to one. Onto.
Appointment of President Pro Town. Appointment of President Pro Town.
I don't see it.
On the back.
Uh, appointment of President Pro Town. I'm. Well, first, is there a motion for, yeah, is there a motion for President Pro Town? What my idea was going to be is actually make this appointment in, at the December meeting along with other posts and other board members and other committees that we currently have in place and do those all at the same time.
That's fine.
Is that for both the appointment and the committee and subcommittee appointments?
Yes, all, all those committee and subcommittees will, I'm not saying they will change. They're going to be dissolved and then reestablished probably in the same way that they were before. They're just not going to be an automatic carryover. They're going to be reformed.
I would like to make a motion due to the current situation with a missing council member and applications to table under new business items C, appointment of President Pro Town and item D, board committee and subcommittee appointments to the December meeting.
And technically, it's postponed.
Postponed, yeah.
Postponed.
Support.
Is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah.
I support that.
Okay, moved and supported. And those items will become part of the December agenda as new business. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that takes effect. Item E is Spark Grant Resolution in our packets. It looks like we received from Ryan some information about a Spark Grant. A Spark Grant. And if you could briefly encapsulate that for us.
Yep, Spark Grants, lots of info in your packet. DNR has lots of money for municipalities right now. You'll notice that a resolution of support from the municipalities governing by the governor's two additional points in the scoring criteria. So I recommend the council make a motion to adopt the resolution to participate in the Spark Grant Program.
Make a motion to support the Spark Grant Program.
Moved and supported to accept a grant. I think because it's financial, we should roll call vote.
Adopt the resolution to participate. Yeah, this isn't a grant, we're applying for it.
We didn't get the section of points.
No.
Didn't I say that?
Yeah, you probably did, I just didn't understand it. Okay, we're going to adopt that vote to.
Adopt the resolution was the intended.
Bottom sentence down there.
To adopt the resolution as presented.
Are you okay with that?
Adopt the resolution to participate in the Spark Grant Program. That's what he wrote, anyway.
So basically, we're continuing on with our efforts to. Okay. Moved and supported, those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, we will continue our efforts to seek a Spark Grant Resolution.
Can I ask the question?
Your man.
So there were other grants, and I know for this one, both Ryan and I did the webinars on it to fill this out. But I had requested at the last meeting a couple other grants. So are we, is the process now doing resolutions for the grants? And if it is, we need to do the other ones that the council agreed to move forward with.
At the moment, there isn't really a set process on grants for the village. This one only came up because it's timely.
The others are too, actually. And that's why I put the dates on them when I put them in the packets last night.
I noticed in, in the packet info, you mentioned that us creating a resolution adds two points in our grant application. So I'm assuming that's why we wanted to make sure we got that because it helps with our grant process for that. I don't know if all the other grants Melanie's referring to also have similar point system that we can benefit from resolution or not, but I think that our process might vary depending on the type of grant and requirements. Is that correct?
Indeed, it does. Because there's no established process, it's a grant-by-grant, case-by-case basis. And so the ones that do, we seek resolutions. The ones that don't, we don't. This one, because it is beneficial to have a resolution, it's included in your packet today.
Okay, those were a couple of comments, but we already had voted on that. Is there any other questions of Ryan? Because we're going to move right into village manager report, which is on the agenda.
Short and sweet. Yep. Ready? You probably saw in the paper that the Brandon Township Board is working on a sewer study. We will be shortly as well. You'll get that, get that at the December meeting. So the delay is not going to impact the timeline for the work. Ours is based on a previous study and it should go faster. It's the next step in understanding the feasibility of the sanitary sewer project. Any questions on that one? Okay, village clerk, you will see the job posting. We are very sad to lose Jenna as our clerk. But it's been posted on the website in the Citizen, on the Municipal League website. Please share with anyone interested. Any questions there?
Can we, last time we shared it in the Oakland Press, and I think that's where we got more hits from.
We did, the DPW labor position, we did.
Okay.
The last time we posted for the clerk, we posted a couple places, but they were these ones. And I spoke to Jenna about it too, and she said she found it in the Citizen and that was by far the best place to find when she was looking. So shout out to the Citizen and that's why we started here. Oakland Press is one we have used and been successful with before, so we may expand the search if we need to. We have a December 8th deadline along with the posting. So if we're not seeing a lot of candidates at that time, we'll come back to it. Personnel and I will be discussing in the very near future, as I've already received a few applications. Yeah.
Regarding Jenna sleeping on the eighth, do you have any arrangements with village, remaining village staff to adjust to cover these responsibilities in the interim until we?
Yes, Jenna and I have been talking about responsibilities and sharing processes and documents back and forth. And then the rest of the staff and I have been talking about time and office coverage and processes. And we already have run into those small office issues of having enough eyes on things. So we're trying to be cognizant of that as we will work through the transition. Any other questions? More to come. Next up, EV charging stations, we've been working on them. There is no address and never has been in that parking lot. So that's the first hang up. After that, we will get service installed and it'll go quickly after that. Shouldn't be long. Christmas preparations are taking place. Last year, we did luminaries the week before Christmas. And so I would ask council, as well as anyone in the community who's interested in helping, to help with that. We are looking to make luminaries on December 21st and 22nd from 8:00 AM to, I have noon in the packet. Last year, we did till 10:30. It'll probably be 10:30 again. And then we put them out on the morning of December 24th from 8:00 AM until we're finished. That is a Saturday this year, right? But.
Yes.
It's Christmas Eve, it's always holiday. So more info to come. I'll have a flyer for you, you'll see it in the Citizen. More info to come.
Is there anything the village is going to do? Are we going to be in the parade this year or are we going to not? Or what? I know we were talking with DDA and we won't be doing that portion this year because of different reasons. But are we, as a village council, do we want to do anything in the parade?
I know I will not be here, but I don't know if there are others that could do something.
Well.
I'm a new kid on the block, so I'm.
Hearing nothing.
Yeah.
Maybe we will just.
Previously, Ken, we, we dressed up in costumes that the DDA would get and supply. And then we'd come in and we would walk the parade, but in costumes, so you didn't even know.
In the past, we've done.
And then we'd hand out candy kind of thing, so.
We've done floats or we've just walked with a sign or whatever.
But we haven't, as a council, done anything. So that's why we were curious if.
The DDA is happy to secure costumes if there is a desire for them.
Go ahead. Thank you, DDA President McLaren.
No, no Rudy, the head's too heavy and you can't breathe.
Any other questions on Christmas?
Nope, sorry.
Fast approaching. Last up is the Small Urban Project for 2023. We budgeted for the Oakwood Sidewalk Project using smaller urban funds that were allotted in 2017. I'm working on it with Row Engineering. The project has calls for sidewalk on Oakwood for the whole mile from M15 to Brandon Hills Drive, part of which is not in the village. We're working to fine tune that and spend all the money as wisely as possible. So to accomplish sidewalks on part of that stretch is the goal. The money won't last the whole thing, it won't even cross the creek.
Oh, yeah.
But we are hoping to capitalize on that, that money where we can. More to come.
I have a question. We have two contractors right now for engineers. We have Keef and we have Row. When are we going to go to just one? Or is there a reason why we would continue to keep two? If we liked Row so much, why did we go to Keef?
Row is a much bigger firm than Keef. Keef, their, Keef's specialty is not municipal engineering. They mostly do small projects that aren't roads or sewers and things like that. Row does lots of M-dot projects. They were our engineer of record for a very long time. And so, and they continue to be for things like bridge inspections and things like that. They have the engineers and the staff to do M-dot projects where we don't in-house, obviously, and Keef doesn't either. So there are places where it's beneficial to use Row and there's places where Keef is all we need. If we wanted to go to one, that's a conversation we could have. It would probably require some, you know, requests for proposals and qualifications and things like that. And there, there, a lot of times, it's the three bears where Keef, Keef is too small and Row's too big. And there's probably one that's just right. And we could probably flesh that out more if we wanted to. Most things day to day, it works out just fine to have both that we're able to work with. But I can see where you're going, and if you'd like to, we could entertain that. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm happy working with both. I don't have a preference. I, I know they both have specialties in strong suits, so I use them when we need to.
I can share a little historical perspective on that too. Keef was brought in by the previous village manager because that was his preference for engineering. So we started bringing Keef to do engineering. So it's prior to that, we always were using Row.
Row for a long time, yeah.
So that's why we now have Keef and Row both because Row was involved with projects until that point. Products started bringing in Keef, so we still have this mix of both engineering firms on different projects. That's just perspective for Keef.
Thank you.
And then your packet also contains the letter from the Municipal League about upcoming training for new, newly elected local officials. There's also one that I just received this afternoon from Oakland County that I will send to you via email about training for newly elected and people that would like a refresher in local government meetings and fun stuff like this. That's all I got.
Can I ask about the DDA and the tree grant? What is that and what trees and what is happening with that?
Yeah, did, did I ever put it in your packet?
No.
Okay, so the village and DDA have been working on tree grants together. Well, one tree grant specifically from the DNR. And we were told, it was supposed to, it was supposed to have, their timeline was very stretched out. And when, we applied last January or February, we're notified in the spring that they weren't going to announce it for a while, they weren't sure what was going on. Some, they had people change. In September, we found out we received the grant for the full $4,000 to plant up to 25 trees. Some replacement, some new. But then they also asked us to hold on to that because they hadn't announced it publicly yet. And I have, am yet to see a public declaration of who received the grant, which is part of why I hesitate to share it. But we've talked about it in DDA meetings as well. So that $4,000 gets us 25 trees. They announced it late enough in September that it was too late to begin spending and try for a fall planting. The funds are good through the end of September next year, which is the end of the state's fiscal year. So we can do a spring and a fall planting, which is ideal because some trees are hard to find at certain times and some survive better when you plant at certain times, yada, yada. Working with, we have a couple tree experts between village staff, DDA members, DDA members' wives. We have lots of people that are very knowledgeable about these. And we've created a catalog of trees that fit the hardiness factor for this area of Michigan and our regional whatever else. So we have lots to choose from. Him too. Sorry, I should have mentioned him as well. But we've got lots of trees to choose from. Finding them at different vendors and time of year and all that stuff is going to be the next challenge. So you have to spend money and show that you've spent to receive that funding. So they'll pay you back for the trees themselves. But all the DPW labor time goes towards our match. The equipment goes towards our match. We will very easily exceed our portion of the match just in regular clock hours for our crew. And then we will be replacing some of the trees along Mill Street and South Street. Some will be, you can already see where some of the sidewalks are heaving a little bit, where some of the trees have outgrown their base. Apparently, in 30 years, trees do grow since 1992 when they were planted. And then some of the grates that exist will be filled with new trees. And some will be in planters that we can move seasonally or move them for events and things like that. It'll be a combination of all those things. Details yet to be finalized. It takes some time and I'm not sure if we're supposed to talk about it publicly anyway. So that's what I know so far.
Okay, so then we'll know which trees are being removed and what.
There is a map that was included in our grant application. Dave Wilson has been the mover and shaker on it from the, from the DDA board. He's fantastic and he is a hound when he's on a project. We created a map showing where all the trees are now. The ones that are kind of overgrowing, they're either up above, they're running into something down below. They're kind of outgrowing their great. So we know which ones are, would ideally be replaced or moved or things like that, which ones need them. It's, every tree, if you start looking around, has a different issue. So some are really close to power lines, some are really close to the building, some are really close to the right away. There's all kinds of factors. And then you run into factors like disease. So you can't have one tree, you can't have a whole row of ash trees. You have to intentionally spread them out to present, prevent disease and all. And you want to be careful of things that, you know, drop a lot of things. So you don't want to put a bunch of Bradford pears that are going to leave a lot of leaves and fruit for the DPW to clean up daily, year round. So you got to be careful of lots of things. It's a, there's a lot to it. And that's just off the top of my head. Thanks for mentioning it. Happy to discuss.
Cool, thank you. Cool. Thank you.
Quick question. Since we didn't get updates on any updates from Streets or CIP?
Streets, no. Um, you saw on, uh, the bills we paid that the Row invoices for the bridges, um, all the work was done in mostly August, a little into September. Some of the inspections and things were September. So those invoices are almost done coming in, uh, and pay estimates and things like that. The MDOT paper trail is exhaustive. Um, uh, that would be the only Streets update, and then, uh, Small Urban progress. Um, it's a 2023 plan, so we're trying to vet that project right now and see what that looks like. Um, and then CIP, what, capital improvements plan, or...
Just wondering if we have, uh, you know, what's... Any new updates on...
I...
What do we want to discuss that at the... I think that might be a good topic to add into the January workshop.
Budget one, or I would defer to our planning commissioner if he's still listening, because they're in charge of the CIP. No, I don't have any major updates for you.
Okay.
And then anything else, DDA, that you... Other than the tree... The tree thing was just...
The DDA sworn a new member at their meeting last week, or didn't actually, because he wasn't sworn in as village president. But we'll have a new member shortly, because by statute, the village president is a member of the DDA board.
Had he been sworn in, we would have kept Quorum.
Oh, yeah.
Indeed.
We lost Quorum at our last meeting, so we didn't accomplish a whole lot. Um, we did receive notice today that in the Oakland County Gem, um...
Local gem.
Competition, if you will, um, Ortonville received the most entries. Or it is believed that Ortonville received the most entries. It's not...
That was fun.
Or anything like that.
Yeah.
Um, so we got kudos from our liaison from the county today on that, so that was really cool.
That's cool, right.
Good work for the DDA there. Um, Small Business Saturday was Saturday. Um, I came down. I did a little live, and, um, all the businesses that I was able to, um, visit in my short amount of time I had to spend downtown, um, were happy with the crowd, um, at that point in the day. Uh, we have some drawings and things that are going on that will be announced, um, through that. Trees, but again, as Ryan mentioned, it weren't really supposed to go public yet and had no notice of when that could take place, so...
DNR gets to announce.
Wasn't secret. It just wasn't public knowledge yet. Um... Our accreditation is coming in February, um, so please, I'll mark your calendars for that. And if you give me one moment, I'll find the date for you. I believe it is the 8th.
Oh, two. And we... It was in our packet last time.
Yes. Yep.
Um, so as... As always, um, of course, we are in a situation where they are revamping the standards, the accreditation standards this year, so we're going from 10 to 6. Nothing is being taken off the table. It's just a revamping of everything. Um, but local community support remains high on the list. Um, so if everybody doesn't mind making themselves available at some point throughout the day, that day to meet with our creditors, um, that would be... That would be great. Um...
Are you doing the tree lighting on Friday?
The village manager does the tree lighting.
Yeah. Who is doing that tree lighting?
The tree lighting's always been...
Village president.
It's usually been the president.
Oh, good.
I can.
The village... The tree lighting has, um, historically taken place during Christmas in the village, um, in an effort to spread out things so that people could come down for particular points that they wanted to, um, hit, and to make sure that it was dark for the tree lighting, which is kind of quintessential to the tree lighting. Um, it was moved to Friday night last year. Um, and so as far as I'm aware, it's taking place this Friday evening. Um, unfortunately, my children... My one child is in first grade and has been very sick this year. Um, every time I try to get to a Christmas in the Village meeting, I get a phone call from the school that says, "You need to come pick your kid up." Um, so I missed out a lot, and I will not be here for Christmas in the Village this year. So, uh, I'm a little out of the loop on things, unfortunately, as far as schedule for the event. Um... But, as I said, I believe the tree lighting is scheduled for Friday evening. The event will take place, the parade at 1 o'clock Saturday, um, and everything kind of happening downtown going on until 4:00 PM. Um, was also an effort to condense, because, you know, six hours... Seven hours is a really long time for people to be downtown. Um... Of course, the library's got stuff going on. All the businesses will have things going on. There's tractor rides and carers rides, and Santa will be here, and all kinds of stuff, so... Um, and then that'll be our kind of last thing for the year. I think it's really... Again, we lost... We lost Quorum, so we didn't get a lot done, um, last week. But as always, I am available for any questions that any of you have for the DDA as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Cor. Your vote's good?
That's all I got.
Okay, perfect. Uh, that could, uh...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Okay, the meeting's adjourned.
Done. Aye.
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
Short and sweet.